We will call our meeting to order and we have a very full house and we are thrilled that you're joining us this evening and we're excited to celebrate your accomplishments. And with that, Madam Secretary, please take role.
Yes, Madam President, all five board members are here this evening.
Thank you. In honor of Dr. Wall's birthday today, we are going to have him lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. As you notice, Dr. Wall is in his brand-new Chicago Blackhawks jersey that Dana and the Board bought for his 50th birthday and it was a gift and we were very excited to share it and we wanted to be sure that he shared it with you as well. So if you'd like to stand up and model for us, that would be fabulous. So some of you have not been here before. Typically, he is dressed very fine in a suit and very professional and today he is -- it is here, but he's also professional in his sport gear. So with that, we will start with our special presentations and our perfect ACT -- oh, I completely forgot. We're gonna -- please join us in singing "Happy Birthday" to Dr. Wall.
(Singing) Happy Birthday to you. Happy Birthday to you. Happy Birthday to you, Dr. Wall. Happy Birthday to you.
Thank you very much. I couldn't think of a better place to celebrate my birthday with all you wonderful people. No, really, it's been a great day. Everybody's been very gracious. Thanks to the Board. Thank you very much. Thank you, Dana. Thank you, Administration. It's been a really fun day, fun afternoon. Thank you so much. And on to the recipients. We have some great honors tonight, so welcome, everyone.
So first, we have our perfect ACT scores and we will have Dr. Wall and John Williamson back. Mr. Williams will be presenting.
I was going to wear my Colts jersey, but after the game, after yesterday, I decided not to. So see if you had any extra Blackhawk jerseys. It's my pleasure to be here to introduce an outstanding student and with some outstanding achievements. And at this time, I would like for Senior Audit Chandra to come up to the stadium or to the podium. Audit earned a perfect score of 36 on the ACT College Admissions and Placement Exam. On average, less than one-tenth of 1 percent of all test takers earn the top score. Just to give you the math, out of 1.85 million students who took that test last year, 1,407 of them earned a perfect score and Carmel High School through Audit owns one of those students. So congratulations, Audit. Just a couple of other things about this young man. He was also a National Chemistry Olympiad finalist. He was the Intel Science and Engineering finalist, Moody's Mega Math Challenge National semifinalist, Biology Olympiad semifinalist, and also a Seaman semifinalist. So quite a young man with quite a list of accomplishments. You're also going to hear his name in just a few minutes one more time also. It's also my honor to, once again, come up here and I know this is Dr. Wall's birthday and it's a special birthday, but I can only give him 45 National Merit semifinalists. If he was just a little younger, it'd be a really special day, but we are proud to recognize 45 of our National Merit semifinalists this year. These 45 academically talented seniors have earned this prestigious award by scoring in the top 1 percent of students nationwide on the PSAT test taken during their junior year. Again, to put this in perspective, 1.5 million juniors take the test. Out of that, there are 16,000 National Merit semifinalists from 22,000 high schools. So those kids could do this math for you. That's less than one student per high school in this country and Carmel High School is very proud to claim 45 of those students. This time, I would like to introduce our College and Career Coordinator, Melinda Stephan, in our Counseling Department, and she is going to introduce you to those students. And when -- students, when she introduces you, please have your parents stand up with you as you come across the podium. So because I think they have something to do with your accomplishments and so we want to recognize them also.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. I am so pleased to introduce to you our Class of 2015 National Merit semifinalists and if you'll come forward so that our administrators and our Board can congratulate you. Brian Alexander. John Chen. Yi Q. Michelle Day. Evan Dexter. Jessica Earnhardt. Anna Feng. Kelly Herman. James Holland. Miriam Hu. Matthew Kleinman. Helena Ma. Pablo Paliza Carr. Ruchi Patel. Jean Sheen. Kyle Walker. Alex Yu. Robert Yu. Ju Hao Zhao. And I'm told that Helena Ma has arrived. And these are your Class of 2015 National Merit semifinalists. Parents, feel free to come up and snap a picture. If you snap a picture.
We want to get some photos this weekend. We're also gonna -- Jennifer --
Just wait one second.
-- get some pictures of the group in the lobby after this, at the break.
Okay. That'd be fine, too.
But the Board wants to congratulate you, so let's do an assembly line.
This is so exciting. I can't believe it, okay?
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Ruth. I'm glad you were able to make it.
Yes.
Nice to see you.
Congratulations. Way to go. Oh, my gosh, this is so exciting. Way to go. Looking for great things from you guys. Moving on and up, right?
Bring a good photo of this big guy.
Congratulations. Way to go. Wait, that's great. Where you go.
Hello there. Congratulations.
I'm very excited.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Way to go. Very good. Oh, you're waiting till the end, huh?
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Why is this not online?
Okay, I need yours instead.
Good. Okay. Like I said, at the conclusion, we're gonna have a little break. Mrs. Spanner, we're gonna do a break to the meeting and then Jennifer's gonna get a bunch of pictures of the National Merit semifinalists and parents, that'd be a great opportunity for photo opportunities for you as well. We also have with us this evening the Elementary Academic Coach of the Year and I would like the Principal, right here, Mrs. Kim Barrett, do the honors and talk about how proud we are of our Elementary Coach of the Year.
Well, first of all, it's just a privilege to come after those amazing students and along the way, I know that you've had incredible mentors and great coaches and that's what Mr. K is here tonight. It was a privilege for Smokey Row to nominate Mr. K for the Elementary Academic Coach of the Year. It was even a bigger surprise and a wonderful award for him to be named the Academic 2014 Indiana Association of School Principals Academic Coach of the Year. He's been an academic coach at Smokey Row for 10 years and he has a streak going with Math Bowl for four consecutive state championships for Math Bowl. And the biggest thing that we wrote in the nomination piece was that he has made it an all-school celebration to be able to make the team. It's a very competitive process, just like it is at every school in Carmel and it's an all-school celebration when you make the team and we feel like it's just an all-school celebration to be able to be a part of any academic competition. And so thank you to all coaches and congratulations to Mr. K.
Huh? You don't want to say anything? All right.
Foundation. If I could bring up the Directors and looks like some of their Board. Barb Danquist and Stephanie McDonald, would you do the honors of introducing the new Board Member?
Thank you very much. Good evening. I'm Barbara Danquist and this is Stephanie McDonald and on behalf of the Carmel Education Foundation, we are very proud to be able to be here to award these grants this evening because of your support through all of our different fundraisers, especially last Saturday with our ghosts and goblins. We are now able to stand here tonight and give out these grants to these recipients where they can then turn this wonderful money into something for your children. We're gonna introduce Margaret Hollis, who's in charge of the Grant Committee, and we thank you, community. We thank you, parents. We thank you, staff, for helping us do this. Mrs. Hollis.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to represent the Carmel Education Foundation this evening as we recognize great teachers with great ideas. Last spring, the Foundation awarded 12 grants totaling $10,500. Tonight, we are excited to award 17 grants worth $15,500. As I call your name, please come forward and accept our congratulations. From Cherry Tree Elementary, this is the -- they are awarded the Allegion Grant. It's for iPads for Art and Music Classrooms. From Mohawk Trails Elementary, the title of the grant is Step Into Books. It is the Barbara Underwood Grant and this goes to Lori Hayes and Betsy Pancher. And, oh, and Hella Rumschlag and Barbara Trotman. I didn't read on down. And also from Mohawk Trails Elementary, their grant is entitled Technology in the Arts and this is an Allegion Grant as well. This goes to Scott Barages and Lisa Sullivan. The next grant is -- goes to Orchard Park Elementary for Classroom and Staff Radios and it is presented to Jennifer Pennix. Also from Orchard Park Elementary, another grant for headsets with microphones to increase fluency rate goes to Christine Amick and Kate -- Christine Amick, sorry. And from Orchard Park for E-Portfolio, Casey Wright. From Prairie Trace Elementary, the grant is for their New Yearbook Committee and it goes to Sarah Ah and Beth Peasley. And from Prairie Trace Elementary, the title of the grant is Expanding Expression Tool. And also from Prairie Trace Elementary, Orton Gillingham Math Training Grant goes to Jennifer Marshall and Kathy Schuler. From Town Meadow Elementary for Stability Balls, Lynn Payne, Julian Moser, Liz Higgins, From West Clay Elementary for the West Clay Elementary Lemonade Day, Amy Bannister, Laura Gilmore, Libby Patino, Doug McCrery, Ryan King, and Suzie Butts. And from Woodbrook Elementary, Equipment for PE for Life Skills and Fiat Classrooms, From Carmel Middle School, the title of the grant is Activating Students' Minds Through Active Seeding, Sarah Mindam. And from Carmel Middle School, the title of the grant, Acts of Random Kindness, Mark From Clay Middle School, Video Modeling in the Science Classroom, Susan Fulp, Andy And from Carmel High School, the -- for the Carmel Symphony and Lynn Harrell, Sue Han, And from ESC for the ATIA International Conference, Darla Ashton. Congratulations to all of you. The Carmel Education Foundation looks forward to hearing about your experiences as you implement your great ideas.
How you doing? Got the Colts going.
We have seen them at the construction camp, so yeah.
This is very -- this is a known --
No, it's not.
You guys see Amy Fu is a minor legatally to the Hawks now. All right. Good to see you. I know, what's going on with that?
We canceled our meetings.
We still like you, though. Yeah. Well, you -- hey, you've had enough with other meetings. We're well aware of that. Okay, moving on the agenda, we have District Update, Spotlights, and Excellence. We have with us Mr. Jim Peterson, Carmel Education Validation 2013 Winner, Young Playwrights in Process. Jim, would you come forward?
Sure. Thank you. I guess I'm here to kind of show you what we can do with the CEF money. I was fortunate enough to win last year and I promised to keep this brief. I've got to get back to a costume crew meeting over at school for the Boe Stratagem, which is coming up November 13th through the 15th. Some cast members are here, so it's a fun romantic restoration comedy. It's filled with love, sword fights, all kinds of fun stuff, so encourage you to come out. Tickets are on sale now at www.tickettractor.com. All right. Sorry, I promised I was gonna put a plug in for that. Here we go. After teaching for 22 years, sometimes you need a little spark and I decided that my spark needed to come from playwriting. It was an area that I didn't feel very comfortable with and every time we came up with the process and the curriculum, I always felt a little awkward and so I decided to pursue that for the CEF grant. And I ended up hiring a guy, his name -- oh, I should probably -- oh, there it is. I got the $700 grant last year from the Carmel Education Foundation and with that, I was able to hire a professional playwright named Andrew Black. I didn't really know this guy very well, so I thought, why doesn't it be fun to kind of go and take his class? And so the Indiana Writers Center was offering his class and I ended up enrolling and really liking the guy and ended up offering him the position to come into my school, to talk to my students, and help write the plays. And the stuff that he helped me write personally, we just ended up competing this last weekend at the first-ever Mick Theater Fest and it was a piece that I had written originally. It was an original piece called "The Importance of Being Electra" and we placed third in the Mick Conference, so we felt really good about that. Oh, yeah. But I digress. That had nothing to do with the CEF grant. That was just me personally. But thank you. So what we ended up doing with the money was we hired him to help us come in to school and he helped us write these anti-bullying plays. We've been doing this for a couple of years, going to the middle schools and showing the issues with bullying and kind of portraying what bullying is like and what the outcomes would be and how to kind of prevent In addition to that, Andrew Black kind of hit two purposes. I was able to hire him not only to help us write the anti-bully plays, but also help with a contest called the Young Playwrights in Progress, which is sponsored by the Indiana Repertory Theater. And so he helped my class write original plays, and I talked about this last year, but they were over statewide, there were 102 submissions from Carmel High, my class, we entered 16. For the first cut, they only took 30, and from that 30, nine of those were from my class. And as far as the high school semifinalists, they picked three for the state, and I got the one, and ended up being the winner. So I was really kind of pleased with how it turned out last year, so. Yeah. The piece that she wrote is Gabrielle Alfred, she's now at West Point, and she's, she wrote a little play called The Satan Game, that they did a stage reading at IRT with professional actors, and there she is among all the other professional actors and the other students that competed in the contest. So, there you go. Thank you.
Thank you very much for sharing, Dr., actually, Mr. Peterson, and congratulations to all of our outstanding award recipients, our students and teachers alike. We are very proud and excited and wish you the very best. At this point, we will take a five-minute recess. You can snap pictures and do what you like. Go enjoy the rest of the nice evening, and then we will resume our meeting in about five minutes. Okay, thank you very much. We will call our meeting back to order. Moving on to, actually, we are not doing public participation because nobody signed up to speak, so we will move straight to consent. May I get a motion on the table to approve consent?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Wonderful, thank you. Okay, one more time, once. At this time, I'll suspend the regular board meeting and open a public hearing for public input regarding the proposed additional appropriations on the 2014 General Fund and Referendum Fund. On October 13th, Mr. McMichael presented a proposed additional appropriations on the 2014 General Fund and Referendum Fund, and asked the board to authorize the administration to advertise for a public hearing. Mr. Michael, would you like to speak?
Yes, this action simply gives the administration the authorization to spend money that we already have, which is really what an appropriation is, is just the authority to spend, and so the board adopts a budget for the entire year, and that budget is ultimately about 18 months out from the time we'll spend the last money. And so, as sometimes is the case, this past year, we've had expenses that we did not anticipate 18 months ago. Fortunately, we have revenue to support those additional expenses. One significant example is the State Performance Grant, which will provide cash awards for teachers, and so as a result of expenses like that, we need additional appropriation in order to pay those out, and so that's what this process is for, and there's opportunity for the public to comment on if they would so desire.
Thank you very much, Mr. McMichael. So at this time, I'll offer members of the public and for the board, administration, opportunity to make comments regarding these plans. We'll keep the floor open for a minimum of one minute, so feel free to chat and contribute. Any big plans for the birthday?
This is it. So, yeah.
The boy.
Did Jennifer get any snapshots? Well, how about a few in your jersey, so we can share that with the Blackhawks?
She hasn't had it, but she should.
Mm-hmm. We could tweet that.
With you guys, with five of you.
Don't be so excited.
Oh, you're in.
Oh, you're in.
Oh, yeah.
About 15 seconds? And seeing that there are no comments coming from the floor, I will take this opportunity to close the meeting. And we'll now resume to our active meeting, and with that, we'll move on to our first action item, which is Mr. McMichael, the approval of the resolution of additional appropriations. Mr. McMichael?
Thank you. This is the next process to approve this resolution regarding the appropriation, and then it will be sent to the State Department for their approval.
May I get a motion on the table to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next, we have the adoption of the 2015 budgets. Mr. McMichael?
Thank you. These budgets were presented to the board on two prior occasions. Most recently, they were presented at a public hearing, giving opportunity for the public to comment on these as well. Now is the time for the board to adopt these budgets, as well as the Capital Projects Fund Plan and the Bus Replacement Plan. After these budgets are adopted, they will be advertised, or at least the Capital Projects Plan will be advertised one more time, and then all of this information will be sent to the State Department, Department of Education, for their approval.
Thank you very much. May I get a motion on the table for the adoption of the 2015 budgets, the Capital Projects Fund Plan, and the 12-year Bus Replacement Plan?
So moved.
Second?
And I'll second.
Discussion. I do have one quick question. It kind of took me by surprise, I might have misunderstood. After we approved this, you'd said the Capital Projects Fund Plan will be advertised again?
It's advertised, there's a notice of adoption, so it's not for hearing, it's just notifying the public that that plan has been adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions or discussion items? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Moving right along, we have the Bus Driver Agreement. Mr. McMichael?
Yes, this is actually the last agreement to address salary adjustments for employees. In this particular case, the highlights of the proposal include an increase of $1 per day, which is actually a step increase for drivers, and then some of the miscellaneous compensation, primarily for field trips, has been increased 1%. These increases are comparable to what the board has approved for other support staff.
Thank you very much. May I get a motion on the table?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion. Yes?
Quick question, it's really just a clarification, I've never caught this before. The contractual year for the bus drivers is actually August 1st through July 30th?
Yes.
Okay. Any reason why that's different, or?
Bus drivers and teachers actually are the only two employee groups that receive individual contracts, and like teachers, they, their contract is essentially on a school year rather than a calendar year.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions? Okay, all in favor of supporting the bus driver agreement signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Mr. McMichael, Printing Services.
Yes, Carmel Clay Schools has had a contract for printing service, for printing services for our central print, printing operation for the past 20 years. Under this contract, all the equipment, all the supplies, and under this contract, also two operators are provided to provide that service. The administration considered Rico, which is the company that has had this contract for the past 10 years, as well as Xerox, those are really the two, really the two, only two players that are in this type of printing, that are at all competitive. And so after reviewing that information, we are recommending that Rico be awarded the contract, this is a five-year, 60-month contract, and you can see the information in front of you, but Rico is the, their pricing was the lowest, and we believe it was the overall best proposal for our school district. There's a rather involved agreement that's a part of this report. That agreement has been approved by our Corporation Counsel, David Day, and we would recommend that the board award this agreement or contract to Rico.
Thank you very much, Mr. McMichael. May I get a motion on the table?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. Yes, Mrs. Knowles?
Yes, this contract is for, what time period again, please?
60 months.
60 months?
Mm-hmm.
And we are guaranteed that at the end of this 60 months, that their cost will not exceed the 1.6 million?
That's correct, because we, that would be the maximum if they fully applied an inflationary factor that they have included in the agreement. We know for, we know the first-year cost, and they have an opportunity to increase that cost only once a year, so if they were to increase it to maximum each of the next four years, that would be the cost. We don't anticipate that, based on the last two contracts that they have had, they have not increased it to that maximum.
Okay, I just want to make sure that it doesn't go over the maximum at the end.
No, it would not.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Then let's go ahead and take a vote. All in favor of supporting the Rico contract for printing services signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And Mr. McMichael?
Thank you. This next item is a bid award for the replacement of the chiller at Smokey Row Elementary School. Members of the board are probably aware that we've had a great deal of difficulty with the air conditioning system at that school, and so we're excited to be able to replace that unit before next cooling season. This is one of the projects that we're now able to do because of the sale of the general obligation bonds, which the board recently approved.
Thank you. May I get a motion on the table?
I move to approve the award of the bid for the Smokey Row chiller replacement.
Second?
Sure.
Thank you. Discussion. Quick discussion item that I do have. Typically, how long do the chillers last, and what has been a turnaround on this particular chiller?
Well, I would say that in the 25 to 30-year range, depending on the unit. Now, Cherry Tree, for example, was opened in 1989, and it has its original chiller, and Smokey Row was opened, which was on the same floor plan, in 1993, and that's the one we're replacing first, so it's not an exact science.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Yes?
Not a question so much as a comment, I just, you know, I hope the public recognizes the. I just, you know, I hope the public recognizes that our business people do this sort of thing just on a routine basis. We solicit bids, we evaluate them. Everything's done according to very, very high and exacting standards of how to procure this sort of a thing. And I think the public should appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. All in favor of supporting a bid award for the Smokey Row elementary, elementary chiller replacement? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. McMichael. You had a number of items to be prepared to present tonight. Moving right along, we have policies, and we have the second reading. And I'm going to ask that we take the next three together in a grouping, 1521, 3121, and 4121. Each of those policies read exactly the same. And with that being said, I will, I guess we're proposing our second reading for policy 5121, personal background checks. May I get a motion on the table to approve?
Yes, I'd like to approve all three policies.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Discussion. Yes, Mr. Phillips?
I just want to say that I personally gratified that the administration and the board decided to correct what I, I think was a defect in our policy, forcing employees to pay for their own background checks.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Well, then, that being said, let's move ahead with the vote. All in favor of supporting policy 1521, 3121, and 4121? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next, we have policy 2430. We have a second reading, corporation-sponsored clubs and activities. May I get a motion on the table?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Pam and I did want to point out that there's a couple little additional items that we included in this policy based on our previous discussion. The use of the name logo and school colors was also added to the third from the last paragraph. And, yes, it has been reformatted as well. Okay, seeing that there are no questions or concerns at this point, may I, let's take a vote. All in favor of supporting policy 2430 as prepared? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving right along, we have discussion items. We've got our calendar committee. Dr. Wall?
Thank you, Leila. Really want to commend the policy, excuse me, the calendar committee, representing our parents, our teachers and administrators, who took this work seriously and thoughtfully, and this evening have presented a prepared presentation for us to listen to as in a discussion item format. Dr. Tom Harmus facilitated this committee as the principal of Creekside. Tom, could you bring your committee up? We thank you for being here this evening and for your upcoming presentation. Thanks, Tom.
We didn't bring all twenty-seven members of the committee with us tonight, but I did bring some friends to help me with the presentation. Basically, as any smart administrator, I'm going to introduce, and I'm going to get out of the way. So, and it was made of parents, teachers, administrators, and also a member of the parks board, and we really appreciated that. It was a very smooth meeting process, and a very smooth process, looking at many different facets of the calendar. Our charge was to develop a calendar that supports the academic goals of Carmel Clay Schools. Within that charge was 182 student days, 185 teacher days, that the end of the semester, first semester, would end before winter break. And we usually typically do a three-year calendar, and as you can see in your packet, we did recommend another three-year calendar. We looked through our research, and our research group looked at traditional and non-traditional calendars, and we thought that was a very, very important aspect. We know that several corporations around central Indiana are moving to non-traditional calendars, so we wanted to make sure that, that we did address that issue. And to help me with that, Jill Ship, and let me introduce everybody real quick. Joenda Stella is from West Clay Elementary, teacher. Brian Lyde, Town Meadow Elementary, teacher. Rihanna Allen, Clay Middle School, teacher. Our parents, Jen Pletcher, and also Maria Gottlieb. Jen is from Woodbrook Elementary, and Maria is representing Carmel Middle School. Our administration, Jimmy Enske, athletic director at the high school. Jill Ship, principal at Prairie Trace Elementary, and Josh Kendrick, assistant principal of Carmel Middle School. And Jill and Josh were part of that research group, and I'm going to let them talk a little bit about what they found.
Thank you. Good evening. My group that I was part of, we were asked to look at the research on traditional calendars versus what you would call a balanced calendar. So, we divided up and searched online and searched in different areas on different research, and what we found, that there were, although many, many opinions, we couldn't find too much research on whether a balanced calendar or a traditional calendar was best. It seemed like every piece of research or article that we read favored one or another for various reasons, and it was very contradictory of each other. So, because of that, we just really found no evidence to support a balanced calendar benefiting students and for educational or academic purposes. Therefore, we were leaning toward staying to our traditional calendar, because we couldn't find anything to support not staying with it. So, then this is where Josh came in, because he contacted actual districts that did change to the balanced calendar, to see if he could get more data on is one better or other. So, I'm going to let him kind of take from here.
Appreciate that. Good evening. As Jill mentioned, just one of a group that did the research and worked at some research as far as the non-traditional calendars, and O'Brien and Jen were on our team as well. My role, and it was a pleasure to serve on the committee, but my specific role was to talk to some of the schools in Hendricks County, where I previously worked as an educator at Brownsburg, and to reach out to my friends and colleagues at Avon, Danville, and Tri-West, just to talk to them and say, how's the balanced calendar going? And back to our charge, could they attribute the change from a non-traditional calendar to a balanced calendar? Could they attribute academic success because of that change? And although, you know, my friends and colleagues and I, we had many different discussions, when I came to, you know, could they say, were test scores or reading scores going up because of the calendar? They wanted to say yes, but they also were very cautious, because they said, we have additional programs put in place to make sure that teacher attendance, the reading program, the curriculum, those programs were also there. And so, they could not attribute the change from a traditional to a balanced calendar to that academic progress. And so, our research team reported back to the larger committee, and, you know, we were not able to say, we need to go away from what we're already doing here at Carmel Clay Schools. Dr. Harmus?
Any questions on that part that you might have? Yes, ma'am?
Yeah, how long were the corporations that you researched on balanced calendar?
The longest one was three years, and so, the I-step scores they have back, I believe, were two years, and Dr. Dilliam might have to help me with that. But, you know, it hasn't been, and that's what they said. They said, number one, we're already high-achieving schools. Number two, our attendance rates are already up there than state. And number three, we really haven't done this long enough to see and determine the impact. Many of the schools, you know, they said, we've started to transition and put in things that are needed to make that transition to a balanced calendar, the supports and the two weeks and the childcare and some of those things. But they, they weren't confident in saying, you know, here are the results because of the change at this time.
Okay, thanks.
And the same was true with Noblesville Schools, Greenwood Schools, and Clark Pleasant, which is Whiteland Schools. There just wasn't enough evidence there to move forward. Maybe in three years, when we revisit this, there will be enough evidence that, that we can look at the pros and cons. But right now, the committee didn't feel like it was there. So, we're going to move to our recommendations, and Joenda's going to start us off?
In discussing fall break, we recommend that we don't make any changes, and a few of the factors that went into that decision, of course, always maximizing academic growth, minimizing student absences, but three factors which were more of a main concern was the current placement of PSAT and where it falls in direct line with fall break. Students, if we did add an extra day, we found that they would have to go back to school. That first week would be a full week for all the students. The teachers would have to go back Thursday or Friday before, and lose that weekend before coming back to school. So, some of those things went into place as we were thinking about how we would change fall break. But, as you can see, we recommend no change at this time.
As for Thanksgiving break, we did recommend a little bit of a change, based on the survey results and a couple of other factors that I'll discuss in a second. We would like to recommend that Thanksgiving break start at the end of the day Tuesday, and will, and to include Wednesday, as well as Thursday and Friday, as it always does. The Wednesday before Thanksgiving, I believe, was the highest rate of absences of the year by a lot. It was one of the biggest jumps. Based on the teacher survey results, the teachers were highly in favor of that. Now, based on the parent results, it seems like if you just looked at the, the basic numbers, about fifty percent of the parents did want to keep the break the same, just having the two days. But, breaking down the other three choices, they were all in some way, shape, or form for extending the break. Either just the Wednesday and pulling an extra day here, or pulling an extra day from somewhere else, or making it the full week. When you add up all those numbers, it's a fifty-fifty split. And so, with the parents, you know, kind of, and the families being fifty-fifty, but the teachers overwhelmingly supportive of it, and looking at the attendance rates, we decided that that would be our recommendation.
It was a little bit of an oxymoron, because the parents, fifty-one percent, said, you know, we don't want to extend it, but yet over 2,000 children are pulled out on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving break. So, evidently, the other fifty percent take their kids out. I don't know. But that played a significant role into the Wednesday, and also with the teachers, played a significant role on that Wednesday. Jimmy?
Before I speak about our recommendation on winter break, this was my fourth opportunity to participate on one of our calendar committees with a variety of different people. That's just a glutton for punishment when you do it that many times. But it is something I'm very proud of, that we have stayed the course with such a traditional calendar over the years, and I think our, our data and our test results and achievements that we've had in a variety of different areas reflect what we think is the best calendar for our community. One of the comments that came up when we spoke about the balanced, balanced calendar idea that is seeming to be more and more common in several communities, we have a very strong importance that our community, our parents and our kids and our buildings place on extracurriculars and co-curriculars. And part of that is a lot of time that, that our students spend with our staff, getting ready for competitions and for contests. So, those things won't go away. Those, those competition schedules, those contest schedules, those practices won't change, even if we're on a one-week or two-week fall break, for example, or extended breaks at other times during the year. The concern that kind of comes out from some of those other school districts is, you have a lot of personnel invested in coaching or directing different groups, and their burnout factor gets much more when they don't get the same break as their peers do and the faculty, so to speak. Their summertime shortens up, and that's sometimes when they get recharged for the next year. So, I also speak about winter vacation. And we recommend no change on this, with the results being overwhelming, both from parents and teachers on this. And we looked at a variety of different things, because some of the calendars coming up with the placement of Christmas, for example, with the placement of New Year's Day and New Year's Eve, sometimes it might make sense to make it just eight days off instead of ten full, ten full days off in a row. People tend to really want those three full weekends instead of just two weekends of winter break. So, we would recommend that we keep winter vacation as is.
I was on the part of the committee that looked at spring break, and spring break is going to stay the same as our recommendation. No change, and keep it one week, still with the Friday off prior to spring break, to keep consistent. We're going to keep it in the same first full week of April. There was a lot of discussion about changing that to correspond with the third, the ending of the third quarter, and there was just not a necessary reason to move that. And as you can see in our survey, sixty-eight parents, percent of parents wanted no change. Seventy-four percent of teachers and staff wanted no change as well. Plus, we heard that lots of the great deals in our area come for spring break as we go later in the year. So, we know a lot of our community enjoy that as well.
As you're aware, board members, the teachers are under contract for 185 days, and students attend for 182. That leaves three days where the teachers are here without students. And the question to the committee was, how do we divide those days and where would we place them in the school year? There's been some adjustments over the last year or two to accommodate when those days fall, so this was a topic of importance for the committee to look at as well. In looking at the survey results of teachers, there was a little bit of a split, but generally speaking, the teachers were looking for one day at the start, one day in between semesters, and one day at the end, with the question only falling as to whether that day in the middle would happen at the end of the first semester or the start of the second semester. And if you drill down far enough in the data, there is a preference leaning towards the day being when they come back in lieu of holding them here before they go on break. And so, we're recommending that you place the day at the start of the second semester.
I did want to take the opportunity to thank everybody in part of the calendar committee. I also wanted to thank Dr. Dillon for his advice and his leadership given to me as I went through this process. These people that you see up here, you can see why they work so well with, on this, and you can see why we were able to come to consensus. So, those are our thoughts. Those are our recommendations to Dr. Wall, and we appreciate the opportunity to serve.
Well, thank you very much. I really, not only as a board member, but as a parent, appreciate the, the level of, the comprehensive level of investigation that went into determining what would be the best. I think the balanced calendar has been a very heated discussion. We've received feedback from members, we've received mailed letters to say, go with the balanced calendar. And I really appreciate the evidence-based recommendation that you're bringing before the board. And it gives us tools to share with others when they question as to why the board is going to approve one calendar versus another. So, thank you for that.
And that's exactly what it came down to. I told these guys I'd rather take a two-week vacation to Vermont in October, but the reality is for our kids, this is what's best. This is what the research says. This is what our people say. So, they did the right thing, putting the kids first.
Thank you.
They were still in session, and they were doing remediation and everything. And so it fits their needs more than it would fit our Carmel community. But I appreciate the time that you took to look at that. And also, just, this is just a question, because someone threw this out at me, was there any discussion of, I hate to say this, getting rid of fall break and taking a whole week at Thanksgiving?
There was. But we also talked about student well-being and staff well-being, and we felt that if we didn't have anything before then, it would be remiss of us to make that as a recommendation. Yes.
Yes, following up on Kathy's question, I would like you to follow up with data for the next three years, just to make sure that we don't have a lot of students taking the whole week off for Thanksgiving now because we have granted them now three days, and the parents will just take two more. I understand the reasoning behind giving them the Wednesday, but, you know. So I'd like to see some data on that the next time the calendar committee would meet to see how that falls.
I will tell you that that was part of our research this time, and I'm sure in three years, it'll be part of theirs, too.
Okay. I have another question. I noticed the first semester is only 88 days and second semester is 94 days. Is that going to be an issue since there's six days less of instruction?
I would tell you that we had that conversation, especially at the high school level, because they're the ones taking the finals, and it's the best balance that we can honestly get unless we want to start in July.
Right.
And I'm not sure that anybody wants to go that drastic in there.
One of the things that Amy and I have talked about, and I don't know if the committee did, with the drain of time on spring standardized testing, it really isn't as skewed as you might think as far as days, as far as time allotted, because that's really the glut of our spring testing.
I know that there were some issues in the middle school with some of the language classes, trying to get in all of their coursework in the same time period that the second semester does. So that, I was just wondering if that was an issue.
I believe our maps, curriculum maps, address that.
Yes, they do. And last year, you're correct, there were some issues with world language, but it was with the snow days because we had so many days, and so we had to readjust because of the loss of days. But the curriculum maps, as Dr. Harms says, do address the balance.
Tricia, you have some questions?
Yeah, really just, so to sum it all up, your recommendation is to keep basically everything the same except to add the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, and then do the kids start one day earlier?
The kids would-
To make that up, so to speak?
The kids would start one day earlier, but because instead of having two faculty days at the beginning of the year-
Right.
...and having only one, we wouldn't start into that prior week.
The Friday before.
Yes.
So really, that's the only adjustment.
And also, just moving the teacher workdays, the contract days.
True, true.
Those would be the two changes, yes.
Okay, thanks. That's it.
I have another question, I'm sorry. When you got teachers' feedback on the teacher contract days, did you get more elementary teachers' returns on those, or did you get more high school teachers in the survey? I was just wondering, you know, in the percentages, where did everybody fall?
So we asked for the data to be extrapolated by level so that we could see if there was a preference of primary versus secondary and whether there is a difference there. There was generally, yeah. If you're looking for straight numbers, 411 elementary employees responded, 185 middle school and 183 high school. So relatively speaking, there's an even split between primary and secondary. There was a preference in elementary to have probably two workdays at the get-go in raw data, but when you combined the numbers for a middle of the year, remember, they were split into two different answers, one for the day being at the end of first semester and one at the start of the second semester. If you combined those, they still outweighed the people who wanted two at the front. And then the secondary was leaning the other way, they wanted the day in the middle anyways. So we did look at it, but it still came out with the same conclusion.
I was just wondering, because last year, we added the two days at the end of the year just for the high school so that they could finish up their exams and do their testing and grade them before they had to get their grades in. So that was what I was concerned about, whether it should be at the beginning of the semester or at the end of the semester.
Understandable.
That was just a day, and it was for-
Yeah, at the end of the semester, at the end of the second semester.
But we didn't do anything different at the secondary than we did at the other levels.
No, but you took the day away from the first semester, second semester, the day at the beginning of the second semester.
Yes, just a day.
Moved it to the end of the second.
Correct. Just one day, not two.
No, that's what I meant.
Okay.
And as part of our recommendation, we recognize that, and therefore, it meets all those needs. It meets the needs of those people who wanted it at the beginning of second semester and also meets the needs of the high school teachers to still have that day at the end.
Yes, Mr. Phillips?
Thank you. Comments more than questions? First of all, I'd like to echo the concern that my colleague Pam raised about Thanksgiving. I hope we'll be paying very careful attention to that Monday and Tuesday of Thanksgiving week to make sure that they're not cannibalized, to create a week-long vacation. If that's the case, then I'm sure that the administration will find a way to rectify that. I'm encouraged, Mr. Harms, to hear you indicate that we will be possibly revisiting the balanced calendar issue as we have more evidence in the future. You know, I realize that, and I've read the same things, I think that my colleague Kathy Fried has read about balanced calendars make more sense for people that are in socioeconomic challenged environments rather than here in Carmel. And finally, I'd like to give a big shout-out to our superintendent for his leadership in constructing this process. I think that this is a terrific way to tackle difficult questions like calendars. And I'm going to guess that if you had a secret ballot amongst all of you folks in the committee, you'd agree that your input has been real. Okay? So I think that's exactly the procedure and the process that we need to follow for all such questions going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. And I believe, Tricia, you have another question?
Just a comment, I just want to bounce off what Mr. Phillips said. Thank you for everybody on the committee, everybody that's here and everyone else, because it just, it does seem connected to our staff and our community, our families. It was done in a very balanced, logical way and presented in a very balanced, logical way, and then we get on with the business of educating our kids. So I thank you for your level-headedness.
I want to echo that. Thank you for taking the time to be here this evening, and more importantly, time to serve on the committee, because that service is, as we say over there, is student-centered, and we appreciate that.
I think the process has been validated.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Where we go from here is that we will bring this up for an action item at our next meeting. In the meantime, if we have any questions from the board, we will direct those to Dr. Wall, who will then direct those to the committee. We do appreciate your time and effort and energy and are very excited that you worked so quickly and efficiently.
Quickly.
Well, pretty efficient.
Yeah.
Yes, quickly and efficiently to provide us with these recommendations. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Next, we have our course changes, and with that, we'll turn to Dr. Dudley.
Yes, thank you. This evening, I bring to you several course changes and modifications to proposed courses for discussion. And the new courses that are being proposed really offer a very rigorous curriculum, hands-on, that engage the students in critical thinking and problem-solving. So we're excited to propose these course changes for you for the 2015-16 school year, already looking ahead to next year.
Thank you very much, Dr. Dudley. And I know there were a number of questions, specific questions about these discussion items, and I appreciate you getting back to Dr. Wall and providing those answers to the board. Does the board have other items they'd like to discuss or questions they'd like to propose this evening? Mrs. Knolls?
Thank you. Yes, in the answer that we received, it talked about, we used to have Physics B, and then it was done away with by the college board. How long have we not been teaching Physics B?
I'm not sure. I would have to find that out. Physics B, though, was a course that was actually combined two years of, where the kids would actually earn six credits.
Right.
And so it combined two years of content in one year. And so they pulled them apart, and we offer Physics 1, and then Physics AP 2 is the one we're proposing. I want to say, though, we, and I don't need to look back and look, but I want to say that I believe we started, it was just last year that we started offering the Physics 1. And so then the, but I will have to go back and check that.
Okay, but what about Physics C?
Physics C has always been offered, and it's still being offered, because that's the second-level course after Physics 1, but it's, you have to be concurrently enrolled in calculus. What Physics AP 2 does is that you don't have to be in calculus.
Right.
So it's an algebra-based course, so the kids can still take a second level of physics without having to have the calculus as well.
So did we add curriculum to, I mean, add additional things to coursework to the AP 2, Physics 2, or is it basically the same course that it was, but?
No, it's a course through college board.
So it's a brand-new course?
Well, it's college, we follow the curriculum through the AP curriculum, through college board. It would be brand-new to Carmel High School as we're offering.
But it's a subsequent to the Physics 1.
Correct.
I think it's fairly new to-
The AP as well, if I remember right. The science made a few changes within the last couple of years, and I think that's-
Okay, and I had one more question. On the advanced child development, it says that the person who will be teaching it will receive professional development in order to teach the course. And who would be delivering that professional development? Would that come from us or from Ivy Tech?
Well, for all of our dual-credit courses, the teachers that teach those courses receive professional development from the different places-
From the college?
-that offer the dual-credit.
Okay.
And they follow the curriculum the same as they would, like, for example, this one would be Ivy Tech. So they will follow the same curriculum as if they were taking it at Ivy Tech, use the same textbooks that they would be using if they took it at Ivy Tech as well.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Mrs. Hackett?
Just a couple of quick ones. On the IB Business Management SL, what does SL stand for?
Standard Level. There's, IB has standard level and higher level.
Same course.
Oh. Well, my next question has to do with the college entrance prep. You had mentioned on our explanation online that that is an online class offered, or any of the other classes here online, or is that the only?
No.
Okay.
And the intention of this would be to start in offering it in summer school, to start the course out as part of Indiana Online Academy, and then with the possibility that that may come in during the regular school year.
Okay.
But for right now, it's just using it through Indiana Online Academy.
And then that kind of leads to my next question. What would be the target audience for that at this point? Would it be students entering their senior year or students entering their junior year?
It would be students entering their junior year.
Okay. And I just want to comment, I think that, I know there's some area, private high schools that offer, I don't know if they're classes like this, because I haven't seen the curriculum exactly, but this type of thing for a fee. So I think this is obviously a really cost-efficient way to address needs of a variety of students in our community. So I commend you for that, and I also commend the course structure in that it targets those of all abilities that are seeking college entry.
Yes, Mrs. Fried?
Okay, a couple of things, segueing off of Tricia here. The college prep course, you said they would take it, it is going to be offered for like a one-credit.
Correct.
Can they take that more than once?
I don't know. We'll find out.
Because it would seem to me that that would be a good way to accrue a lot of credits, but-
[laughing]
We would have to look at, also, would the state allow them to take it, you know, more than one time? And the other thing, on the IB Business course, do we still send our teachers to IB training for that?
Yes.
Butler has been designated an IB training school, you know. Just thought I'd throw that out there. Close, not in Boston or-
And I believe we are actually taking advantage of that with some of our other IB courses this fall.
It's safer.
Mr. Phillips?
Thank you. Just a comment. I went to a pretty nice college, and I don't think that our curriculum could come close to what we offer here at Carmel High School. I just think it's fabulous, the things that we offer these kids. It's wonderful, it really is. Thank you.
And just to piggyback off of that, do either any of you know the date that we are having the open house at the high school for families to come and see what we offer?
November 2nd.
November 2nd?
We're told, this Sunday.
Okay. So FYI, anybody out there? November 2nd, fantastic date to see what we have going on at the high school?
Many of our kids have gone there, mine are currently going there. They put the signs out?
I've noticed that North Central has signs for their open houses all over.
We've got the yellow signs out.
So we've got signs, too? Okay.
Good. We're not going to let them show us.
Any other questions? Okay, then we'll look forward to taking action on these. That will provide enough time, or do we need to take action at the workshop on the 10th?
This is fine.
This is fun.
They advertise it in there, that's fine.
Fantastic. And then, moving right along, let me see where we are. Superintendent's report. Dr. Wall, do you have anything you'd like to share?
Nothing new to share, thank you. Great, great meeting.
Still feeling pretty good?
Pardon me?
Still feeling pretty good?
Pretty good. I know I'm getting-
Although I'd say it might be a little warm in the layers.
Roger said, "I'm still awake, I'm getting old," he said, "I'm still awake."
Board members, we have an opportunity to share. Do you have anything you'd like to share this evening? Mr. Phillips?
Thank you. I'm wearing my special bow tie, which is to celebrate the fact that 60,000 kids, students, will be descending on Louisville, Kentucky this week as a part of the FFA National Convention. That's about a tenth of the total membership, which is in excess of 600,000 kids from over 7,000 high schools around the country. Membership is at an all-time high despite the fact that fewer and fewer people farm for a living. How can this be? FFA offers something special, leadership career development. I'm very pleased to be a part of that organization, and so, here's my tie.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Any other, anything else to share this evening? Well, thank you very much for joining us. With that in mind, meeting adjourned.
7,000 high schools around the country. Membership is at an all-time high despite the fact that fewer and fewer people farm for a living. How can this be? FFA offers something special, leadership career development. I'm very pleased to be a part of that organization, and so, here's my tie.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Any other, anything else to share this evening? Well, thank you very much for joining us. With that in mind, meeting adjourned.